Good evening, Canby. Welcome to the Canby Regular Meeting for August 19th, 2020. Apologize for the late start this evening. We had a work session that, to use one of my favorite words of 2020, was robust in heavy dialogue. And we'll probably carry over here into this meeting this evening, so we will try to catch you up as best we can. So we'll keep moving through the agenda. Communication, anything from staff right now?
Nothing from staff at this point. Yeah, and Melissa's shaking her head, so yeah. You guys are good to go.
Thank you. Joe or Melissa, do we have any citizens there to give input, or has anything been sent in since 5:00 today?
There have been no messages sent from the public.
Great, thank you. Next on the agenda is a presentation from Canby Fire about the local option renewal levy. According to my screen in my upper left-hand corner, we have several of our, it looks like Chief Davis, and I want to say, is that Mr. English there hanging out? Hello, sir. Chief Davis, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council. With me tonight is Sean Carroll, our Board President, newly elected this year to Board President, and also Division Chief Matt English. And thank you, Melissa, for helping us with the PowerPoint presentation tonight. It will be very brief. The next slide, please. Okay, as you know, the Fire District is moving forward with a vote of the people for renewal of our levy. So with that, I thought I would present to you just a few things about the levy as we move forward. Next slide, please. Okay, who is Canby Fire? Canby Fire basically protects the city of Canby, the city of Barlow, and we extend all the way out towards Bernard's Road and towards Highway Malino Road. We cover about 52 square miles. We're an insurance standard office rating of Class II in the city and Class III in the rural area, including the city of Barlow. We currently have 16 line personnel and around a very robust 30 volunteers for the Fire District. And we're governed by a fire board elected by the citizens, five fire board members. Next slide, please. Okay, are the services provided to the city of Canby and Barlow in the 54 square miles is emergency medical service, ambulance, we are your ambulance transport, provided with pre-hospital care by paramedics when they arrive, both on the engine company and the medic units. We provide fire suppression. Community risk reduction is wide range from doing inspections all the way to public education, including hands-only CPR in the junior high school. We also work very closely with the city, and especially this last year, in emergency preparedness and management. Great partnership with the city and the city police department in regards to the COVID emergency that we're still dealing with. And we also provide hazardous materials response into the Fire District. Next slide, please. Okay, the Fire District Board of Fire Commissioners have approved a strategic plan for the Fire District. And as part of this strategic plan, like all businesses, we do have our mission statement. But more importantly, we've developed a matrix that the Board holds us accountable to, to move forward with goals and objectives which, for each year, and then we report out those goals and objectives to the Board in November as we move into the planning for the next budget fiscal year. So the Board tells me, here's your directives, chief, and then they're all the way down to the firefighters on the line take responsibilities for some of those objectives that have been established by the Board. Next slide, please. Okay, what do we do? Obviously, fire suppression is, and EMS are bread and butter, especially EMS. Next slide. We respond to car accidents. We are, our firefighters are all trained in heavy extrication, as you can see in the one picture. But this year, we've been challenged with the COVID emergency. And you can see some of the gear that we have to wear when responding to EMS calls. The good thing is, is we probably will continue to wear this gear for the foreseeable future as firefighters have contracted norovirus, flu viruses, and things like that. So this could be a good thing for us, even though it slows down by about 20 seconds from getting out the door. We are downed up and protecting ourselves, as well as our medic units. Our decon daily, as well after each use, their decon, and if we do transport a COVID patient, when it comes back to the station, we professionally decon it and take it out of service until it's been fully decontaminated. Next slide, please. Structure fires and wildland interface. Our crews train daily in regards to responding to these emergencies, but I'm very proud of our firefighters in that they've gained a reputation not only around the state of Oregon, but down in California, having responded as far as Laguna Beach and San Diego. They were at the Paradise Fire last year down in California. Just returned from the Rowena Fire, or Mosher Fire. And as a matter of fact, they just received a telephone call that they're going to be activating our crews again to go back down into the gorge as a firefight, a fire has escaped down there. So we are one of the first ones that gets the call, so you can be very proud of your firefighters in that as they gain this experience going out, they bring it back. And also, these calls are reversed by either the state of Oregon, or as far as FEMA disaster response when we go down to California, so it's fully reversed for the actual cost. Next slide, please. As you can see, call volume has gone up. This levy that we're proposing to the taxpayers is a five-year levy, and it was last voted on in 2015. You can see from 2001 to 2019, we've gone as far as 3,000 calls for service. And that continues to climb as we speak. Of these calls, for the majority of these, again, are EMS calls. And as we presented to the, to the City Council the last time that we talked about the levy renewal, is at that point, we were at about 28% of the time, we had two emergency calls going on at one time. We're up to 38% of the time, we now have two calls, two EMS calls occurring at one time. And right around 30% of the time, we have three emergency calls occurring at the same time. So you can, you can see that we are busy, and, but you can be rest assured that a majority of our calls in Canby are handled by Canby units. Next slide, please. Staffing-wise, we have maintained staffing for the most part, with the exception of the last time we were in front of you was an increase in the levy, and that was to provide staffing for our second medic unit during peak hours. I'm pleased to announce to you that we were only going to staff it during the daytime. We're actually staffing that second medic unit 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, that we're staffing that medic unit. And with the levy, we are not asking for more personnel. We're asking to maintain the current level of service at 16 with three chiefs. Next slide, please. Where does the money go? 65% are personnel costs and materials and services, 17% in capital outlay, around 3%. Next slide, please. What's the levy all about? Next slide, please. The levy shall, it will maintain the emergency response service for the levy, which is 45 cents per 1,000 assist valuation for five more years, beginning in 2021. This is a renewal, not an increase, and based upon the assessor. Next slide, please. The assessor is estimating the cost, believe it or not, the mean house from, that the assessor assesses the property on is $250,000. We found that hard to believe, so we rechecked it with them, and they said, yes, that's the rate, and based upon the $250,000 house, it would cost $212 a year for the additional 11 cents. Next slide, please. What happens if it does not pass? Well, it would, number one, the Board of Directors would have the option of putting it on a spring vote back to the citizens. If that were to fail, then the Fire District would have to reduce by six personnel. We would not be able to staff the second medic unit and potentially loss of one staff position from the Fire District. This would increase our ambulance response coming from Mulalla, Newburgh, Oak Lodge, Oregon City, or Wilsonville for our second medic unit. But that, that would be the impacts by the renewal levy failing. Next slide, please. So again, here are the numbers. Our permanent rate is $1.54 per 1,000 assist valuation. The levy that we're currently in is 45 cents for a total of $1.99 per 1,000 assist valuation. And to give you the average around us, Clackamas County Fire District One is kind of the high point for per 1,000. 12th Valley Fire and Rescue is about $2.09. And so that brings that ratio down. So the average cost around us is $2.29 per 1,000 assist valuation, and Canby Fire is at $1.99 per 1,000 assist valuation. Next slide, please. Okay, in summary, we, the funds for the levy will be used to ensure continued emergency services in Canby. And we will, as we promised the taxpayers with the bond issue, we will be staffing with this levy, the Northside Station with two EMS personnel. We're also planning on putting interns out at that fire station, and actually, when the intern is there, be able to respond out of that EMS station with a fire engine as well, if the levy passes. Next slide, please. So with that, I was going to ask Board President Sean Carroll to have a few words with you on how you can help us.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Mayor, City Councilors, this is Sean Carroll, Board President. I want to take this opportunity to thank you for your, the opportunity to come before you tonight to bring this presentation to you and ask for your support for our levy in November.
That concludes our presentation, and Melissa, thank you very much for your assistance.
Thank you, Chief Davis. Down Chief English and Chair Carroll, I really appreciate you coming before us and letting us know about your levy coming up. And having been, let's see, twice in the last couple of years, and most recently my mother-in-law needing emergency services, I'm thankful that we have the response time that we have in our community. I'm excited about our partnership to deliver to Canby and a Northside Station, and you can definitely count on my support in seeing this levy pass. So thank you very much for bringing this forward, and there's more that we can do, please reach out and let me know and let, let the others know as well. So thank you. Mr. Carroll.
Mr. Mayor, is it possible to get an endorsement from the city on this request?
That I'll have to convene with the Council and see what that would look like. If nothing short of that, I would definitely do an endorsement myself as part of the voter's pamphlet, so I would gladly do that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Great, well, thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it. Don't go too far, because I think you're still going to come up here in a minute. We're going to move into mayor's business. So first piece of business, just to kind of keep those that have been anxiously waiting, so we as a council yesterday afternoon and evening finished off our round of city manager interviews and selection process. So last night, yeah, we met with all the candidates, put them through a rigorous panel interviews between the council, department heads, and then a number of community members. We invited them down to Wake Park to meet community members and answer off the cuff, straight from the hip, questions from our community members, which then provide us feedback. After a lot of conversation about the great candidates that we had, we do have a direction that we want to go. And what I would need right now is from the council, their consensus to pursue, pursue our most favored candidate and work towards negotiation and conditional offer of employment contingent upon successful background check, with the ability to eventually negotiate employment contract before bringing it back to the council for final approval. Do I have consensus to move forward with that, based on last night's conversation? I'm seeing thumbs up all the way around, so thank you. I will, we will do that. For those of you watching at home, these are decisions, the conversation occurred in exact session. Our decision to move forward, we, we definitely try to do and make sure we do in the light of day, which is what we have done. We can't give you the names yet, because we've got to notify the candidate themselves now that we've made the decision to move forward, how we're going to move forward, and then make sure that we complete the background check. So once those pieces are done, we will let you know what that looks like. So I want to thank the council and city staff for the hard work yesterday and last night, and then all of our department head and community members that were on our panel and came out last night to meet the candidates and grill them immensely. So thank you, Council, I appreciate that piece. We, my pieces are quick. I don't, I may need to report on the park right now, because our meeting was last night and that was canceled to meet with the candidates. I have nothing to report on C4, the Clackamas County Coronating Committee. And then the Region One Area Commission on Transportation doesn't meet until next month, so I will have more at that time. The tolling and diversion committee or ad hoc group that myself and Councilor Varwig are a part of. We haven't had a meeting recently, but just to let you know that in September, on one of our agendas, ODOT will be coming and making a presentation on the lovely tolling idea and projects and what that will look like. So we will get the latest and greatest directly from ODOT. And finally, we, how did we, we're late, as I said at the beginning of the meeting, because we're having a work session discussing the community fee as part of a strategic investment zone. So a number of years ago, the city set up a strategic investment zone as part of our industrial park. And as part of that agreement, in that we use that as a marketing tool and as a piece to draw businesses of a certain size and value into our community. And most recently, the company that took advantage of that strategic investment zone, which really boils down to a tax abatement over a certain amount of investment. So in this case, anything over $25 million sees an investment, an abatement on their taxes for 15 years. And so, but part of that piece is that there's a community fee, community investment fee that the business pays into the taxing districts or that make up the area that the SIZ is in. So that's Canby Fire, that's Clackamas County, that's the city of Canby, Canby School Districts, Port of Portland, et cetera. So recently, when we approved the SIZ several months ago, part of that conversation was moving forward with the community fee and how that was, one, move forward with it, two, then the conversation was going to be how that was dispersed. So over the last couple of months, our city, our city team, Canby Fire, and all the other taxing entities have been meeting to discuss how that community fee would be broken down. Push comes to shove, in a series of conversations, the only three remaining taxing districts at the table were Clackamas County, City of Canby, and Canby Fire District. Reason being is that a lot of those other entities, the taxing districts, pulled out, and so therefore their, the dollars that they would get would basically kind of roll over into who remained at the table for the conversation. Canby School District was one of those. The reason that they pulled out is because that money doesn't necessarily go directly to the school district. It goes into the state as part of the dispersment, so they don't get nearly as much as they would in terms of just it being a straight pass-through. So this evening's conversation in our work session was, did we want to move forward with the dispersments of the community fee between the three groups remaining, which was City of Canby, Clackamas County, and Canby Fire District. And so where we left off with that was that there's the conversation topic of taking the B. So before I go there, if we don't agree on how the fee is going to be broken out, the decision goes to Business Oregon, which historically has then just taken the community fee and given it to all the taxing districts based on a pre-arranged percentages. So what we have in front of us for the three taxing districts would, we would see that revert back, and we would lose several thousand, tens of thousands of dollars a year. So here we are tonight in terms of a conversation of how do we create a, an equitable piece between, or a more equitable piece between the city of Canby and Canby Fire. And that's where we left off in our work session, and we're carrying it over to finish it in, in the council meeting, because we have a deadline of tomorrow to make sure that we have some sort of a decision so that the Board of County Commissioners can approve it, and therefore Business Oregon will have its direction on what it needs to do. Joe, Jamie, did I leave anything out?
You did not. That was a good summary. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Counselor Spoon, your hand is up.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we amend the agreement in front of us to reflect the newly proposed agreement with the Fire District to more evenly split the community service funds as they proposed in the work session earlier.
Okay, can you elaborate on what those percentages were so that present where we were and where we are going towards?
I did not write down the ones that he proposed in the meeting earlier, so if it's okay with you, I'll defer to Chief Davis, who gave us the exact numbers, because I didn't, I did not write them down as he gave them, and I want to make sure they're exact for the motion.
So Jamie and Joe, before going to Chief Davis here in a second, I'm trying to find. So as we're looking at it currently, if we leave it as is, the city of Canby would get a 30%, 30.15%, and then Canby Fire would be at 27.44%. Am I reading that correctly in our packet for this evening?
Does that number include the city's URA portion? Because I thought we got to over, close to 50 when you combined the two.
I did not combine that. That's just a raw city number.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the combined amount is 27%. As the agreement stands, it's 27% to the Fire District and 49% to the city.
49% to the city.
Chief Davis is proposing a equal split, which is roughly 38% to each of us.
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate you having the data there in front of you.
So, okay, so with that being said, we've cleared that up. So Counselor Spoon, your motion then is to pull down the percentage of the city portion and bring up Canby Fire's portion?
Yes, as he proposed in the work session, and as Counselor, Council President Dale had the numbers exact for. I just didn't want to, I didn't want to make up numbers. I wanted to make sure they were exact, but that sounds right.
So there's a motion on the table. Is there a second? Counselor's waving his pencil, so I'm assuming that that's the second. What, any further, so dialogue, conversation?
Yeah, I, you know, that is the chief's latest ask, as I mentioned earlier, and urged us to consider we can do that. Difference entirely out of the unexpected bonus from the education and Port of Portland. It was unexpected money. At the risk of really ticking everybody off, I had a somewhat more generous offer in mind. But this one works. My suggestion was going to be that in, that I think the county would find very agreeable is that in the spirit of the county's generosity, that we just donate that bonus to the Canby Fire District, and it's very easy for the tax assessor to compute, but I can go with either.
How did those numbers play out if we do it that way?
It, it does wind up more generous to the Fire Department. They wind up, if I did my spreadsheet correctly, they wind up coming within $3,000 a year on an annualized basis over 15 of being made whole.
That's if, you're saying that's if the county gives in their portion?
That, that includes the county's portion as well. In terms of real numbers in the first year, the equal split would be a donation from us of $10,182. If we were to donate our entire bonus, it would be $14,642 in the first year. Whatever we do, I want to encourage us to not talk about absolute numbers or percentages, because they will be very difficult on the tax assessor, and everything appreciates. So we keep it simple in terms of even split or full donation. I don't, I can't imagine the county being adverse to that.
Can we get Chiefs and the Fire Department's thoughts on Tim's proposal as part of this conversation?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And thank you, President Dale, the, and Counselor Bruce and Spoon, the, we really appreciate the discussion. The Fire District is concerned, too, that the city does have to provide some service to that as well, and we're sensitive to that. And the 50-50 split seems And the 50-50 split seems reasonable to the Fire District.
The one that we talked about earlier in work session or the one that Tim proposed that kind of makes whole after the fact? I just want to make sure I understand what your thoughts are.
Thank you. Yes, the one that we discussed in the work session.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. Any further discussion on this, on this comments?
Just a quick question, Mr. Mayor, to Joe and Jamie. Good feelings that the tax assessor and the county will have no problem with us just saying, hey, make it even between us?
I think that can be done.
Okay.
And I don't think it will, the posture from the county is that it shouldn't hold up there going forward with the agreement because again, they're not changing their number.
Right. And I can't imagine them being adverse to us being more generous, so.
From the county, I mean?
Yeah.
No, no, they don't have a dog in that fight.
Right.
Counselor Varwick, you were going to make a comment. Are you good?
No, I feel really good about it and I, you know, I appreciate Canby Fire District and having these conversations with us. I know that at times it's gotten a little bit tense and trying to get it all figured out. And I'm glad that we've been able to come to you, a consensus and an agreement that gets them as close to whole as possible. And I just really appreciate all the work that they've put into it and all the work that they do to keep Canby safe as they can, they can. So I'm really happy with how it's turned out.
Okay, well, to keep things moving, there's a motion and a second, and it seems like we're no other conversation or discussion pieces. So though, I'm just going to do a rule call here. Council President Dale?
Aye.
Counsel President Varwick, or sorry, Counsel, Counselor Varwick?
Aye.
Counselor Spoon?
Aye.
Counselor Hensley?
Aye.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor Burgey? I didn't hear you, sir. Sorry.
Aye.
All right, looks like that that passes and we'll, and we will move that forward to the county and ask them first thing in the morning to look at a 50-50 split between these items for, between the city and Canby Fire. And the county will remain as is so that everything can move forward and get to Business Oregon for their approval. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Battalion Chief English and Chair Carroll. Appreciate it. Thank you for being here tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm not sure how quickly you're going to get into liaison reports. But we'll make that, we'll make that vote reflective of a unanimous vote, but the number may be different.
How about if I just abstained from the vote?
Thank you. I was going to nullify your vote, sir. Sorry.
Thank you, Joe, for catching that. I appreciate it.
Yeah, we'll do 5-0 on that vote.
I tried. Okay, so we're going to move into actually council liaison reports. And I'm going to go in the exact same order that's on my screen. Counsel President Dale?
Just a couple of minor things from Canby Utility. Their spring financials reveal that the Water Department is not whole. So they are looking at a water rate increase, which I think I mentioned two meetings ago. Simply put, sales of water are down. What they are hesitating on is the effect of COVID. With all of us back home, we may well be greatly increasing our water, and they won't know that for several months yet. Interestingly, with power, we had a mild spring, and so power sales were down. However, with everybody back home and burning power, the sales might be higher than anticipated. So just an early advisory, but we'll have to wait maybe upwards of a quarter before they see what the real impact has been. And just as a reminder to everyone, Canby Utility manages the water infrastructure on behalf of the city. The city owns the infrastructure and understandably, they need to not run in the red for multiple years. So that's it, Mr. Mayor. Everything else will keep till next time.
Okay, thank you, sir. Counselor Varwick?
Thank you very much. I usually end up going last, moved up on your screen. That's great. Just, we heard from Canby Fire, so I won't have anything to report on Canby Fire. But as far as the Library Board, Irene, our library director for the last five years, has retired. And her last day was this last Friday. So she is now officially in retirement and on her way to the East Coast to enjoy retirement with some family. So we thank her for all of her years of service and wish her luck in that retirement. A new library director has been, has signed a conditional job offer so that background check will begin. And so hopefully, we'll be able to announce who that new library director is soon. It is somebody that has a local understanding of the area. So the Friends of the Library has started or sponsored a community book club. If you haven't seen the advertisements around, there's free books available for it. Everybody's reading the same book. You can pick it up at places like the Library, Book Nug, Retro Revival, Gwynne's, Wayward, and a few other places around town. So be sure to do that, join in the fun, read the book with everybody else in the community. And I just want to thank Linda Warwick from the Library Board for coming up with the idea and really spearheading that. Every other Friday, the Friends of the Library is holding a book sale. They haven't been able to have their big book sale this year due to COVID, but they're doing it outdoors, socially distant, and with following all the guidelines in the plaza next to City Hall. So that's every other Friday, and the next one is on September 11th. And then lastly, I'll just say there's a new story walk that went up today. So if you're out and about around town, be sure to walk by the library, check out the new story walk in the windows. That is all I have.
I just wish that feedback for Zoom, if they're recording this or, you know, whoever watches this. I know iPhones record, so I'll just say, it'd be nice if the mute button was left up there so that you knew that you were muted, so you didn't just start talking. But I'll provide that feedback to Zoom. Counselor Spoon, what do you know? What's going on?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Transit advisory meets tomorrow. A lot of my committees have been on hiatus. Thank you, Sean, for the report on the library. I'm really excited about the community read. And I think that's an awesome thing for Friends of the Library to do. I, so because I don't have many liaison comments, because we're not really quite meeting yet, I wanted to thank, there's a couple of citizens that have really stepped up. And I kind of forgot about it because my family has had masks. But last night at the meet and greet, I remembered how great it is that our citizens are just filling a tree at Wake Park with free masks. And like all these kind of special, unique things that our community is doing right now. And I'm really grateful for that, that everyone's kind of coming together and the energy downtown and the people downtown. So I just wanted to give a bit of gratitude for how Canby is faring these overspoken but unprecedented times, that it's really special the way the community is coming together. And I wanted to thank everyone that's being a part of that. I know Bridging Cultures has been collecting masks to distribute too. So if you are a mask maker, get ahold of me or Bridging Cultures. They're trying to distribute masks to under served populations. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Counselor Hensley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have much to report, other than yesterday morning about 8:30, the Traffic Safety Commission, along with Jerry and Spencer from Public Works and Johnny from the county, had a little field trip out on Northeast 15th and Redwood to look at a situation of cars that park along the narrow roadway and kind of brainstorm some mitigation there. That unfortunately could have been avoided had Redwood developments been planned correctly, but we won't go there. Anyway, I just wanted to make you aware that those conversations are happening and something may come forward in the future about it.
Okay, keep me posted. Thank you. Counselor Parker?
Just one thing, reporting from the Fair Board, and that is we were going to have our soft opening this weekend of the drive-in, but we had some supply chain issues with the screen material. So we couldn't put up a screen without a screen, so we're hoping for a week from tomorrow.
Great. I'm very excited to see that come about. That'll be a lot of fun. So, great. Counselor Burgey?
Nothing tonight. Oh, just kidding. So I am resigning from the position. I had no intentions of resigning from this position. I had every intention of continuing to run for reelection, and I've been enjoying my time on the council, working with each one of you. I've had a great time. I think we've built some friendships and I really enjoyed it. I had an offer or the ability to purchase a 10-acre farm just one mile outside of city limits. It never went on the market. It came up very quickly. Spur of the moment, we jumped on it. We sold our house in 18 days. And we just recently closed on this place. So with, as fast as it had happened and not really certain how fast my place was going to sell, I had not said anything to anyone, and until this place closed, we are now closed. And so with that, I wasn't sure how it was going to work out if I would be given a 30-day or 60-day grace period or anything like that. But it sounds like the easiest and cleanest thing to do is just step aside. And I wish you all the best, and thank you.
Well, Counselor Burgey, I appreciate all that you have brought to the council in the short time that you've been here. And I totally understand the draw, the ability to get, pick up 10 acres simply a mile outside of town is hard to pass up. And yeah, I'm definitely, I'm, you're going to be missed on the council. So I will definitely be reaching out to you and all things construction related. And, you know, between you and Counselor Rocha, it's always been very good insight. So I appreciate all that you've given on the council. So thank you very much.
Appreciate that.
Counsel President Dale?
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge to the public the obvious, that Trigg's expertise and his brilliance and his character have been invaluable to us. But that's the type of stuff that's really obvious and everybody gets to see. And what I wanted to share is that politics come and go, and we all just fill these seats for an amount of time. But what I am very thankful for is I've made a friend for life. And for that, I will always be grateful. Thank you, Trigg.
Thank you.
Indeed. Counselor Burgey, I guess I'll call you that one last hour. I'm sorry, a little choked out, actually. I appreciate your expertise as well. But yes, I've made a friend, and I have to say, disappointed as I am that you're going to be off the council, I am super excited for you and your family and the new opportunities ahead of you.
Thank you, Tracy. Counselor Varwick?
Well, damn it, Trigg. I just learned how to say your name. No, hey, it's been truly an honor getting to know you, and I'm so glad that we had that opportunity. You know, they say, you know, I don't know, what do they say? I can't remember what I was going to say about what they say, but, you know, I know that you'll be a friend for a long time. So this, you know, these seasons come and go, but friends are forever. So I appreciate the friendship with you, and I look forward to riding the dirt bike on your 10 acres someday.
Perfect. Appreciate that. Well, Trigg, thank you. Appreciate all that you've done. And I, I think you're more than welcome to stay on and listen to the fun conversations this evening, or you can bow out if you'd like. I'll leave that, I'll leave that up to you. But again, thank you for all that you've done in the short time that you've been here. So thank you.
Thank you. And I, I do wish to apologize to everybody on the council. When I interviewed for this in front of you, I really did have every intention of staying with the council for a very long time. So I apologize.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Joe?
Hi. So Trigg, thanks again for serving the City of Canby when you did. These were odd times, and you were definitely a steady leader, so I do appreciate that personally. You were a good boss. I appreciate that personally. I would, I have to say that there's probably a computer out there that you need to return to the City of Canby, as well as, you know, whatever other items that you might, please, please return them at your earliest convenience.
Thanks for keeping us stuck in check yet again.
Ah, Joe, all hard, isn't he? All hard. I love it. We appreciate you, Trigg, but, you know, return all the city stuff, okay? Thanks. Yeah. All right. Well, I will move into the consent agenda here.
Is there feedback on Hensley's computer? Am I the only one that's getting that? Can you mute Counselor Hensley?
So we'll move into the rest of our agenda this evening. So next up is the approval of the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of the minutes of the August 5th, 2020 city council work session and regular meeting.
A second?
Motion has been made by Counsel President Dale, and also by Counselor Hensley, to approve the consent agenda, which includes the approval of the minutes of the August 5th, 2020, the council work session and regular meeting. Any changes, conversation pieces, or thoughts? Seeing none, all those in favor? One, two, three, four. Counselor Spoon, Counselor Hensley?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes 5-0. Next on the agenda is a public hearing this evening. Our public hearing is regarding Redwood Landing 2 annexation. File number ANN-ZC20-01, a linear strip of land approximately 10,878 square feet in size. While we're getting this queued up, I will read the public hearing piece. So the matter before the city council is a request to annex property into the City of Canby. Canby Municipal Code Section 16.84.050 requires the council to conduct a public hearing to evaluate the proposed annexation application and determine the appropriate zoning designation upon annexation. This matter requires a public hearing, and all interested persons in attendance shall be heard on the matter. If you wish to testify on this application, please fill out a yellowed public testimony card, or hopefully you've emailed in. At the appropriate time, please step forward to the microphone, state your name, address, and interest in the matter. Those people interested in testifying, please indicate that desire by raising your hand at this time. Amanda, do we, or sorry, Melissa, do we have anyone there regarding this matter?
Can you hear us?
I can now.
Okay, yeah, we do not have anybody here to testify, either proponents or opponents.
Okay, thank you.
Can we have public hearings this way all the time? It was a joke.
Okay, well, maybe not for this time and place. Thank you, though. You may be limited by the time for your presentation. The applicant will have a total of 10 minutes to speak. The proponents will be allowed three minutes each, and the opponents may be allowed three minutes each. The applicant will then have five minutes for rebuttal. Testimony and evidence must be directed to the applicable criteria listed in the staff report or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulations, which you believe applies to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements of, or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an equal, an opportunity to respond to the issue may preclude appeal of the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. All questions will be directed through me, the mayor. Any evidence to be considered must be submitted to the hearing body for public access. Conflicts of interest, at this time, I will ask that each member of the hearing body who has a conflict of interest, please indicate the nature and extent of the conflict, and whether you intend to participate or abstain from hearing the present matter. Counsel President Dale?
No conflicts and will participate.
Counselor Spoon?
No conflicts, will participate, sir.
Counselor Varwig?
No conflicts, will participate.
Counselor Parker?
No conflicts, will participate.
And Counselor Hensley?
No conflicts, will participate.
Great, thank you. I also have no conflicts of interest and will participate if need be. Ex parte contact, also, if any member of the hearing body has had any ex parte contact with anyone prior to this hearing, including a visit to the site, please declare the nature and extent of such contact at this time. Counsel President Dale?
None, sir.
Thank you. Counselor Varwig?
None.
Counselor Parker?
None.
Counselor Spoon?
None.
And Counselor Hensley?
As stated earlier, I was in the area. I have been by the site.
Okay, thank you. Does any member of the audience have any questions for any councilor or mayor regarding ex parte contact or conflict of interest? I've got the participant window open, so if you've got a question or comment, please raise your hand. Not seeing anything, I'll move on. The public hearing will be conducted as follows. We'll have the staff report. We'll have questions of staff by the hearing body. I will then open the public hearing for testimony. We'll hear from the applicant, any proponents, any opponents, rebuttal if necessary, and I will close the public testimony. Any further questions, if any, by the hearing body, and then discussion by the hearing body. A decision shall be made by the council at the close of the hearing, or the matter will be continued to a date certain in the future for further action by this body. This will be the only notice of that date you will receive. The City Council's decision regarding the annexation application is final, and will be reflected with a first and second reading of the associated annexation ordinance. Does anyone have any questions about the procedure of the hearing? I'm not seeing anything. We will move into the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. For the record, Air Force Cell Associate Planner. I was the planner assigned to this file. The item before you is a public hearing to consider an annexation and zone change into the city of Canby. File number is ANN-ZC2001. The subject property for this application is indicated on this map. Essentially, it's a linear driveway, 16 and 1/2 feet wide, that services the tax lot 31E, 34B, 100, which is indicated on the right-hand side in white on this map. The annexation portion indicated is the only part that would be proposed to be brought into the city. The remainder would remain inside Clackamas County jurisdiction. The property is addressed 1260 North Redwood Street. It's currently zoned rural residential farm forest with a 5-acre minimum parcel size. As part of the annexation process, the applicant is proposing to rezone to City of Canby Residential 1.5, which is medium density. And that is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the development concept plan area. The portion that the applicant is proposing to annex is going to be property line adjustment, adjusted to the northerly tax lot. That was already approved by Clackamas County, and essentially, all that is required now is this annexation, and then recording, recording the deeds of Clackamas County to finalize. As you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, these are the applicable approval criteria for an annexation in the city of Canby. We staff evaluated these provisions and presented this material to the Planning Commission on a duly noticed hearing on July 27. This is a aerial, to kind of familiarize yourself with the area a little better. Again, you can see the annexation area itself is that linear driveway, and there is also a half-street portion of North Redwood directly adjacent to the driveway, which would be a portion of the annexation as well. As I mentioned previously, the remainder of the property is going to remain in Clackamas County jurisdiction, at least for this time. With every annexation proposal, you need a legal description of the land, so we know what we're actually talking about bringing into the city. This is the legal description prepared by the applicant surveyor, and this is attached as an exhibit to the ordinance. This is the land use file that I had mentioned, approving the property line adjustment of the same area that is being annexed, and that area is going to be combined with parcel 2, which is on the right-hand side of your screen and indicated on the map. I just wanted to provide a little background on the moving parts for this. So, this isn't necessarily a part of this approval process, but I think it's important to indicate what the applicant is doing here. Previously, at that Planning Commission meeting on July 27, Planning Commission considered a subdivision, and that subdivision was approved and is out of appeal period, but it's contingent on the approval of this annexation, because that subdivision, subdivision's concept plan includes this annexed land. Without the annexation gaining approval from City Council, the subdivision would essentially die as proposed. So, this is basically the four components that are required for the applicant to finalize Redwood Landing 2. It is important to note that this annexation is not on its own able to be developable land, so without property line adjusting this to the northerly tax lot, it's essentially still a driveway. This is the, again, for context, this is the area that Redwood Landing 2 subdivision was approved for, and you can see the driveway on the very southerly border, and that would be the annexation land that we're presenting and deliberating today on this item. Again, a little more context, I think council and mayor are probably very familiar with this area, but this was all envisioned as part of the North Redwood Development Concept Plan area. The annexation area itself was envisioned as part of this, as well as the subdivision, and it's all consistent with the long-range planning efforts of the city and the comprehensive plan. As part of the annexation proposal, our code requires that Canby has an annexation development map, and that areas in that map come with a development concept plan or an agreement. This slide is simply indicating that this annexation area is within the North Redwood Development Concept Plan, and thus meets those code criteria. So, with that background information, and based on the application, the submitted facts and findings and conclusions of the staff report, the Planning Commission on July 27 unanimously recommended that City Council approve annexation ANN-ZC2001, and also to attach the recommended conditions of approval. And then, upon the annexation, the subject properties would be rezoned to our 1.5 medium density residential, which again is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the development concept plan area. This is a sample City Council motion for you all.
Is this microphone on? Can you, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. It also should go without saying, but as part of this presentation, you're making it official in the record, and it's in your packet too, what happened below at the Planning Commission. Just in the long shot that this might be appealed, I always want to make sure, because we're all doing this remotely, that everybody knows that all of that evidence is part of this presentation.
Thanks, Joe.
This last slide is simply indicating some kind of unique conditions of approval with this annexation and zone change, and these are because of the multifaceted approach that the applicant came on this development proposal with the subdivision and annexation zone change, and then in the background, the Clackamas County property line adjustment application. So, these would be conditions that Planning Commission recommended be attached if City Council were moved, would move to approve this application. And with that, that concludes staff's summary of the staff report and this item, and I am able to answer questions as they may arise. Thank you.
Great. I know that we didn't get to see you on screen necessarily, but I think this is your first time in front, well, in front of us, and just wanted to say welcome to Canby and welcome to the planning team, and I really appreciate the work that you've been doing. I've heard a lot of real positive feedback about you being added to our planning team, so welcome to Canby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Questions for staff on the presentation? I've got, like I said, all right, that'll work. We'll close out that piece. Any questions on the proposed annexation?
Just a quick one, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Joe, just in terms of order, I'm ready to do the ordinance to annex it in whenever the mayor is ready. Are we also as well doing the zone change as a body?
Yeah, those are coming together, and if, I'm trying to look at the actual ordinance. It should be part of that.
Yeah, I didn't see the zone change in the, well, it is there. What I didn't see was mention of the actual docket number. If that's not important, then we're great.
Oh, it's one by three. Oh, but it's, yeah, it'll suffice for what it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything, any other questions of staff at this point? Okay. I don't have my gavel, but we will say that this is open. We will open up the public hearing for testimony. We have Rick Givens here as the applicant. Mr. Givens, did you want to address the council on the matter?
Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for having me. Based upon the fact that staff report is favorable, the Planning Commission decision and recommendation are favorable, I'm going to be very brief here and simply say that this application for annexation basically brings a strip of land into the city of an even illogical mess that weren't taken care of. The driveway to the tax lot 100, which is a lot out of the city, will be worked out with an easement through the subdivision, so they will continue to have access, and basically, this just cleans things up, so that in the future, when property in the south is developed, everything will meet and fulfill the North Redwood Concept Plan. We don't have any problems with the conditions of approval. I'd be glad to answer any questions that they have.
Great, thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant at all at this point? Nope. We didn't have any proponents that I'm aware of. We didn't have any opponents that I'm aware of. Therefore, I don't think, Mr. Givens, you need a rebuttal. Much easier presentation than the last time, I think. With all that, I will close the public testimony. Any additional questions by the hearing body? No? Discussion at all? I'm seeing a lot of head shaking, no, so we'll move in. Then, Counselor President Dale, you said you had the motion ready to go?
Sir, Mr. Mayor, I move for passage of ordinance number 1535, an ordinance proclaiming annexation into the city of Canby, Oregon. 10,878 square feet of real property described as a portion of tax lot 100 of the northwest quarter of Section 34 Township 3S, Range 1 East, Willamette Meridian, Tax Map 31E, 34B, and approximately 350 square feet of adjacent North Redwood Street right-of-way, and amending the existing county zoning from rural residential farm forest 5-acre, also known as RRFF 5, to city medium density residential, known as R1.5, for the entire area, and setting the boundaries of the property to be included within the Canby city limits.
I'm sorry, who's checking that? I didn't see that. Thank you, Counselor Varwig. Great, so a motion has been made by Counsel President Dale, signed by Counselor Varwig to approve ordinance number 1535, an ordinance proclaiming annexation into the city of Canby, Oregon. 10,878 square feet of real property described as a portion of tax lot 100 in northwest quarter, Section 34 Township 3S, Range 1E, and we're gonna go WN, because I missed that part, Tax Map 31E, 34B, and approximately 350 square feet of adjacent North Redwood Street right-of-way, and amending the existing county zoning from rural residential farm forest 5-acre, RRFF-5, to city medium density residential, R1.5, for the entire area, and setting the boundaries of the property to be included within the Canby city limits for our first reading. Any further discussion? Okay, with a show of hands, please, may I get those all in favor? One, two, three, four. Counselor Hensley?
Aye.
I get any, anyone against? Not seeing any. That passes 5-0. Thank you all for that, I appreciate it. Mr. Givens, thank you. It's good to see you.
Very much, Mr. Mayor and council members. Appreciate it.
All right. We'll talk with you soon. With that being done, we'll move into the rest of our ordinances this evening. So, first up after that is ordinance number 1533, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and interim city administrator to execute a contract with DNI, Excavating Incorporated, in the amount of $856,364 for construction of the South Ivy Sanitary Sewer Replacement. And I believe, Joe, are you gonna be taking us through that?
I can, really just quickly. This is one of those sealed bids that we did, and the lowest responsive bidder is, we're asking you to go ahead and go with their bid, which is the RNI. Folks, and the crux of this is, it's the sanitary sewer replacement of 60-year-old sewer along South Ivy there. The, within the article of the scope of work, it explains basically that this is replacing 10-feet concrete sanitary sewer in the same trench, along with approximately 2,000 linear feet of 12-inch and 1,600 linear feet of 10-inch PVC sewer pipe mainlines. feet of 12-inch and 16,000, or 1,600 linear feet of 10-inch PVC sewer pipe mainlines. There's 33 service laterals to the new mainlines, removing and placing 17 manholes, there's five drywells, there's asphalt trench repaving and curving and sidewalks, driveways, and then existing landscaping restoration. So that's all part of this package that comes in. As you can tell, it's in the 850 date range, I think you just read it, but 856 range, in the 856,000 range. So DNI Excavating came in after, it looks like 13 bids, and they were the lowest, and we're hopeful that we can get right to this work, because it needs it at 60 years old.
That is some very old city pipes.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I move, we adopt ordinance 1533, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and interim city administrator to execute a contract with DNI Excavating Incorporated in the amount of $856,364 for construction of the South Ivy Street sanitary sewer replacement.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counselor Verwey, thank you. Just a quick question, and this, I'm just purely out of curiosity, and Steph, if you don't know this answer, I totally understand, it's just something that I found very interesting, that with a water project or pipe project like this, we don't, we're not able to just amazingly scratch out a check for nearly a million dollars in replacing, you know, 60-year-old pipe. Do we have any idea how long this has taken us to be able to build up the funds to be able to do this project? And don't say 60 years, because I know we haven't been saving for 60 years. Do it.
I don't know the exact, but this is all sanitary sewer and then SEC funded, that it's a, those funds are slated for it. And so it is, you're right, it is a systemic issue that we get to, you know, take some of this old pipe and make it better, because we slowly, as people develop, collect these fees, and then also slowly, as we collect sewer fees, we save some, because infrastructure's important, and it's good to get the new stuff in, better and better stuff being made, clearly over 60 years' time. So hopefully, this one will last even longer than 60 years. And any other questions you might have in this avenue, I will defer to ex-counselor Trigby Mergie, because he is our resident expert on all things construction.
One of the things that we always talk about when we get into bids like this is, it's interesting in this current, knowing that there's, there is a lot of construction going on, but the spread, we had 13 bids come in, obviously the lowest being the one that we just approved here at 856, but the largest one being, largest bid coming in at $1.5 million to do this project. It's, and it's a lot of companies that we've seen over the, you know, in the past, but several new companies as well. I think it says that there's a lot of people looking to get some work going and teeing up things here for the future, so.
Well, thank goodness for the sealed bid process, right? Because they didn't know what they were, what they were competing against, and so we got a huge variance, but at the end of the day, we get the best deal.
No, that's, no, that's for sure, and I'll be anxious to see, because I don't think in the 10 years that I've been on, I don't know if I recall DNI Excavating being a company that we've worked with in the past, so I'll be anxious to see the kind of work that they do. And I mean, we've got, you know, Camby X is on there, which we all know that they do good work. Let's see. Emory &amp; Sons, familiar with them, so, yeah, I'm anxious to see how this goes. So, thank you. So motion's been, any other questions or comments, Counselor Parker?
Joe, I see this is going to be from southeast 2nd to southeast 13th, and the staff report says that this is going to be done before the county's South Ivy roadwork. Do we have any better understanding of how much that road's going to be torn up? Is this going to be consecutive, or are we going to have two disparate timeframes that Ivy's going to be chopped up there?
I'm hoping that they can work together a little bit, but I will be as frank as I can be, which is, I have not received any assurances as to whether or not it could be done at the same time personally, and so I will gladly dig into that and provide you with that, and hopefully we can do it so everyone, I'm sure anybody who lives along there will be interested in us trying to be as efficient as possible. So hopefully that'll be good news when I, when I enter and share it.
You know, I, I'm sorry I have to ask, because in the past, there has been a time when there was a delay between two segments of utility and road construction. So I would just like to inconvenience our citizens as much as we can.
And truly.
Keep, keep the disruption down on that major arterial.
I hear you loud and clear, and hopefully we can, if we don't get the answer we want, hopefully we can work together to try to make it better.
So, Joe, I'm actually going to piggyback on that, and actually, I would really like to, short of saying tell you to, but maybe strongly encourage you and the team there to reach out to the county on the South Ivy project and see how much overlap we can do. If we're going to open up the earth, let's do it all at one time, and we might be able to save ourselves some money on, on the South Ivy project from our contribution standpoint, and maybe that can be an enticement piece for Camby Utility to underground some power cables. If we're already opening up the earth to redo pipe, widen, lay down some sidewalks, maybe this is an enticing piece for Camby Utility to underground all the power lines along South Ivy. So that might be a twofold conversation to, to have here as this, as we get this approved.
I will gladly take direction and run with it. I will make sure I'm speaking with more than one individual to try to make sure that at least the sentiment is shared, and the urgency of which it's felt by the whole council is felt.
Thank you, sir. I really, really do appreciate that very much.
Yes.
Counselor Parker, I see you wave your hand.
Yeah, if, for your consideration, since it is your authority to set the agendas, but the possibility of having a work session on some of these major projects, of perhaps bringing in somebody from Region 1 ODOT to talk about 99 scheduling, and also, I guess it's going to be the county that is taking the lead on this Ivy Street. But just so, in order to have a studies, a work session, so that we're clear and that we can communicate clearly to our constituents, when that road, that major arterial in our city is going to be shut down. So I'd like us to be affirmative and assertive in seeking out those. Just, that's, that's your call, but it's an idea that we might be able to get folks to the table and make sure we understand as the citizens' representatives what's going to be happening. I don't know how long that road's going to be chopped up. I don't know where the detours are going to be. I don't know what the hours are. And I think as we get closer to that project, it's probably good that we share those with our citizens.
No, I don't disagree. I know it's interesting that this project has become a moving target since it was approved as part of the STIP process, you know, several years ago. You know, this was supposed to be, again, originally I thought the 1819 or 1920 STIP project, and now it's turned into the 2122 STIP project. So I, I hope there aren't any more delays, but I would definitely want to make sure we maximize dollars and whatnot, and as we get closer, we can have the public works team maybe work with county's transportation team on what those timelines are going to look like as we get closer, and we know what that's going to look like. So, so motion's been, any other, sorry, questions or comments regarding this project? The motion's been made by Counselor Spoon, and second by Counselor Verwey to approve ordinance number 1533, an ordinance, what does this ordinance do? An ordinance authorizing the mayor and the interim city administrator to execute a contract with DNI Excavating Incorporated in the amount of $856,364 for construction of the South Ivy Street sanitary sewer replacement, and to come up for a second reading on September 20th of 2020. Any more discussion or comments?
It's September 2nd. I'm not sure, it doesn't say 2nd or 20th.
It says September 2nd.
You said 20th.
Well, it's September 2nd, 2020. Okay. Okay, we cleared that up. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes 5-0. Next up is ordinance 1534, an ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to execute a contract with Landscape Structures Incorporated to purchase playground equipment at Locust Street Park. Joe, is that you again, or do we have someone there to talk to us about this?
I am the only person from this division, so I'll share with you. Okay, so ordinance 1534 spends, or looks to spend, $130,000 on playground equipment. That playground equipment was installed back in 1995, so we've gotten a lot of useful life out of the playground equipment over there in Locust Street Park. So 25 years later, you know, we're, we're doing our best to make sure that not only is everything safe, and so it doesn't break down, but that we can take advantage of, you know, new technologies as well. And it, so it has actually, this was in the budget for $150,000, so the good news is, this came in under budget. So actually, we're asking for $130,000 to make this playground brand-new, this 25-year-old equipment, and what we're getting from it is something that's already earmarked for it, and there's $20,000 less than we thought we had to spend for it. So we would ask that you do indeed pass this ordinance.
So, Joe, is it, looking at the pictures in our packet regarding that, is that what we're looking at, getting?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because, you know, we, sometimes those pictures get out there, and people have a sense of what it's supposed to look like, or think it's going to look like, and then it's not.
I'm hopeful that this is exactly what they're selling and what we're buying. You can further, you know, find out, there's, there's a front view, and then when you turn it over, there's an aerial map of it, so it kind of shows two different areas, and it looks like a whole bunch of activities that kids can do on it. So, and, and these things, I like them because they, they kind of challenge the physical body in a way, but they do it the safe way, and so it looks like, you know, they have something for both 2- to 5-year-olds, as well as 5- to 12-year-olds. And so it's kind of a park approach that we're trying to reach more than just one little region of person, the small people and the medium people are being reached with us.
So, Joe, and I don't know, Melissa, if you've got the capabilities, can you actually share that on the screen here so that we get a viewpoint, at least for those that will tune in later, of what's going to be potentially going in there at Locust Street Park?
Melissa's looking for it now.
Or if she wants to give me driveability, I can do it.
Oh, cool. You're now the host.
Okay. Hold on. So that is what we're looking at in terms of what's going to potentially go in there at Locust Street Park.
Mr. Mayor, we only see your background screen. We don't see the actual.
What?
Yeah.
I don't see either dual screen or not, but it's.
It looked like it flashed up for a moment.
It did.
I'm not as slick as Melissa at this stuff. I thought I was.
Can I ask you a question while you're trying to figure that out, Mr. Mayor?
Sure can.
Joe or Mayor Hudson, I know this has been something I've, I've recently brought up in conversation, but is any of this equipment wheelchair accessible?
Oh, my goodness. I'm sorry, I didn't, I, I didn't get in the weeds enough on this particular one to know that.
Yeah.
I.
And it's possible that it's not. I mean, I love that it's multi-age, and it's, it's, that will be a good replacement for the equipment that's currently there, which also has kind of two different sections, and it's a highly used park. Can we, can we, like, I would love if, moving forward, we could take that into account with some of the playground equipment we purchased, that, you know, we're a town of almost 20,000 now, and I can't think of a wheelchair-accessible swing we have in town. So, or I'd love to kind of take that into some consideration as we develop these parks out.
You know, I think you duly noted, and we should make that a part of our mission. I, just in looking at the picture, and I don't know if it, it does look like the one tire swing is very low, but I don't, otherwise, I'm not sure. I, it doesn't, frankly, it doesn't look like it is.
Yeah. No, I agree. I just, as technology has advanced in playgrounds, there are oftentimes ramps where children in wheelchairs can access the upper levels and whatnot, and I think, I love this playground. I think it's great. I have no issue with it beyond moving forward. I'd love to create some additional accessibility in our playgrounds.
Okay, and thank you for that, and again, it will be a part of our mission.
Can I ask you a question real quick, too, Lower?
Yes, sir.
Since we came in almost 20,000 under budget, is there a possibility of using some of that $20,000 of surplus to enhance this playground a little bit, to have some of that wheelchair accessibility?
It's, something like that is always possible, especially because there is extra money. So let me make a note of that, and we'll see what is possible.
Thank you, Sean.
Yeah, you bet.
All right, so I wasn't as technically savvy as, as Melissa, so it, it's a tremendous upgrade to Locust Street Park.
Can I make a comment, Mayor?
Yes.
It's that it is different, definitely in our packet, and I will say it is page number 183 of 205. And so if somebody wants to access it at our city website, they can go to the packet for this meeting, and on page 183 and 184, they will see the schematics for it.
Perfect. Thank you, sir, for quoting the page. I appreciate that. Counselor Parker, you had a comment?
Yes, I did. Joe, it sounds to me that if we don't have any wheelchair-accessible equipment and we put it in, we would be meeting the threshold for expanding capacity in our park. So I'm going to be asking you to.
I can read between the lines there, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And the other thing is, I appreciate exceptionally Jeff Snyder, our lead park person, of absolutely involving the Parks Committee on this. I talked to several Parks Committee members last night and made sure that, that they, they had a chance to work this through. The mayor and I have been talking for a couple of years now about refining our citizen involvement groups. and I have been talking for a couple of years now about refining our citizen involvement groups. And, and I do want to honor them. The, the one thing that I would ask Jeff and other staff members, that when they do present staff work to us and that it has gone through a citizen involvement process, that that is part of the staff report. I, I saw the staff report. It was a recommendation from Jeff Snyder, a good recommendation, and I support it. But it, it made me do another call to say, did we run this by the parks? Yes, we did. So just a procedural thing as, as we move towards a high-functioning, excellent organization.
Okay, absolutely. I think that is essential just so that everybody knows that everybody's on the same page, on one or two pages. So we'll make sure that that happens. And then otherwise, I, I think it's always great and just hearing from all of you now, if, if we're going to go out and ask about wheelchair accessibility, we will also try to invite more of the opinions of the folks in, you know, their respective expert areas. So know that that will happen again.
Great. Any other comments or questions?
Procedurally, Mr. Mayor, if we're going to look at maybe adjusting them, is it appropriate for us to approve the plan as it is and then know that when it comes to second reading, it might adjust? Or like, what's the appropriate way for us to handle it if there's room in the budget right now?
Well, to me, it would seem that we would need to approve as, as is. And then, you know, any changes or whatnot would then come back before us. But also, I believe, city administrator position, you know, has the latitude to adjust based on their spending limit of 50,000, right? So that if it does go up, they can approve that and those changes without necessarily bringing it back before us. Am I understanding that correctly, Joe?
Yes. Any contract that comes before you, you know, over 50,000 requires this ordinance. Here we are. So now you're over 50,000. That's fine. And any public contract can, can change up to 25% without, it can be amended without coming back to you.
Joe, would it make it easier when the motion is made if instead of writing the, or stating the amount that's on the paper, to put on the motion in the amount of up to $150,000?
Uh, well, that would limit us at 150. Although frankly, I would have to look and see what type of process they use because 150 is actually a process that then you have to go to a bid process. So we probably will be limited to 150, frankly, because of the way in which this probably was utilized public contracting law. But without getting in the weeds, if you just say 130, we'll know that we can amend it up to 150 and amend it up to 25% more.
That's great. I don't, I don't want to delay the improvement, but I would love the opportunity to see if we can make it more accessible. So that's a perfect resolution.
Well, and that happens to be what's budgeted, which is cool. And then if you guys want to look in the future, because Mr. Parker's right, that if, if you're expanding capacity, you can use SDCs in your park. So that might be another source of revenue that is a little bit easier spent because it's, it's earmarked for it and it has to be spent that way. So.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Any other questions?
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Councilor Spoon.
Okay. I move that we adopt ordinance number 1534, an ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to execute a contract with Landscape Structures Incorporated to purchase playground equipment for Locust Street Park.
Okay, thank you. Sir, second?
I will second.
Councilor Dale, Council President Dale Beach of the Pumps there, Congress, sorry about that. So motion's been made by Councilor Spoon and seconded by Councilor Dale to approve ordinance number 1534, an ordinance authorizing the interim city administrator to execute a contract with Landscape Structures Incorporated to purchase playground equipment for Locust Street Park. Any further discussion or comments? I will say that, again, definitely overdue for upgrading park equipment. And I'm glad to see that we're making the investment over at Locust Street Park there on the south end of town. So it's direly needed and I think it'll be a great upgrade to that area. So I'm sure that we can approve this and get it moving. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Councilor Hensley?
Aye.
And anyone opposed? Not seen any. That passes 5-0. All right. Next up on the agenda is ordinance number 1536, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and interim city administrator to purchase four vehicles for Canby Area Transit from Creative Bus Sales of Canby, Oregon. And I think we've got our transit director here to talk to us about that this evening. Yes?
Yes, I'm here.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. Todd Wood, Canby Area Transit. So I've, I've crammed, if you'll notice, two ordinances into one staff report and apologize for doing that, but COVID shut down all the bus factories for several months. And when they reopened, they were backed up pretty far. So I needed to get these in and moving quickly so that we can meet the grant deadlines of next, this, well, this coming June. So the first, the first of these ordinances is for four, four Arbach buses. We went through the bid process with the state. Creative Bus Sales was the successful bidder in this, in this, for these four buses. They're very similar. In fact, they're identical to buses we just bought recently. They're two completely separate pools of money. So I just want to explain that real quick. Some of the money is coming from the 5310, which is our elderly and disabled fund. And that is actually, we're using that money to replace two buses that have met the FTA and ODOT guidelines for replacement. We want to keep our buses replacing at a pretty steady schedule so that we keep them in good repair. The other two buses are going to be exactly identical, but they're actually being funded through the State Transportation Improvement Fund. Their purpose is to actually hopefully add a city circulator, which was the desire of the Transit Advisory Committee prior to COVID. And it was always intended that hopefully in the next state transportation improvement cycle that we could put that on the docket and, and put that into place. I was originally looking to do that this coming July before the world shrunk. We may have to kick it down the road a year. And a lot of it depends on payroll taxes and state transportation improvement funds. But we can't do it unless we get the buses, because we won't have enough buses to run that service regardless. And since we're buying the two, it's better to buy them all at the same time since they're all in the same grant year. So the first ordinance is to purchase those four. They'll be identical across the board. They can be universally used on the 99, hopefully the city circulator. And in a pinch, we can use them for our dialer ride. They're a little big for that. They work well for the shopper shuttle. So they're, they're fairly versatile buses. They're low floors, ADA accessible. You can put three mobility devices on them. And they're fairly nice buses if you've ever had a chance to look at them. Questions about those?
No, I don't, Todd. I, I think, again, looking at the, again, looking at the different fiscal impacts, we've budgeted for these, knowing that we were going to have this coming up, that the grants that were out there for us to go after. You know, we know that, is this, are these parting grant gifts from Julie?
These are parting grant gifts from Julie.
Yeah. So, I mean, just for those at home, I think, and if this is redundant, I apologize. But we're talking about the, the set of four, cost is 500 and, we'll say, $83,000 for the four vehicles. But because of the grant, the, the out-of-pocket expense to the city is just under $30,000. So four vehicles for 30K is not too bad. And then a Gillig bus, which that's one of the, pardon my slang, but big mamajamas that travel around. Our investment is $100,000 roughly for a $450,000 bus. That, and correctly, if I'm wrong, Todd, that basically those Gilligs will run for 200,000 miles?
At minimum. So the, the, let me explain the Gillig real quick. So the Gillig comes from a completely separate grant, the federal 5339 grant. And that one has a higher match ratio. That's why we have to put more money into it. But the Gilligs are larger. They're heavy duty. That's right now, if you see all Tramis new buses, they're all new Gilligs. A little bit different than the other buses in that Gillig does not have a contract with the state of Oregon, but does have a contract with the state of Virginia through the FTA. So we're actually pigging, backing on the Virginia state contract to purchase a Gillig bus. And we're doing that because the Gilligs really are built incredibly well. And they run for a really long time. We should be able to get easily 500,000 miles out of, out of a well-done Gillig. So, and we have two on the 99X right now. This will be a third. Eventually, we'd like to have all Gilligs on the, or at least those larger buses on the 99X. They are very expensive though, so they take a while to purchase.
Yeah, they do. And they do run forever. I mean, it is, they're, yeah, it's pretty incredible. So, Todd, thank you for bringing this forward. I really appreciate it. And any questions for staff at this point? No? All right. Well, well, since we've got two and one, we'll take them one at a time. So I'll take a motion for ordinance number 1536.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 1536, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and interim city administrator to purchase four vehicles for Canby Area Transit from Creative Bus Sales of Canby, Oregon to come up for a second reading on September 2nd, 2020.
Second.
So the motion been made by Councilor Varwig and seconded by Councilor Hensley to approve ordinance number 1536, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and interim city administrator to purchase four vehicles for Canby Area Transit from Creative Bus Sales of Canby, Oregon to come up for second reading on September 2nd, 2020.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
That second was Councilor Spoon?
Oh, thank you. I apologize. I had my head down and heard voices, so I apologize. So the motion was by Councilor Varwig and seconded by Councilor Spoon, not Hensley. Dewey edited and noted. All, any further discussion on the matter? All those in favor? One, two, three, four. Councilor Hensley? Councilor Hensley?
Sorry. Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. So next ordinance is again, based on the same conversation we just had, I'll take a motion regarding the purchase of these larger Gillig buses.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 1537, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and interim city administrator to purchase one vehicle for Canby Area Transit from Gillig LLC of California to come up for a second reading on September 2nd, 2020.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilor Varwig and seconded by Councilor Spoon to approve ordinance 1537, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and interim city administrator to purchase one vehicle for Canby Area Transit from Gillig LLC of California to come up for second reading on September 2nd, 2020. Any other discussions? Nope. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes 5-0. Thank you all very much. I really appreciate it. Next item on the agenda tonight is city administrator business and staff reports. Our interim city manager is out. So is there any staff reports, Joe and/or Melissa?
Nothing from the city administrative side of things. And I know Melissa's ready to give you the recount of what you did.
Well, great. Well, I'll get there shortly. Second opportunity for citizen input. Are there any citizens that wish to opine, Melissa and Joe?
There are none.
Okay. All right, Melissa, now's your chance. Ready, set, action review.
All right. You have approved the consent agenda, amended the IGA between Clackamas County and Canby Fire and the city of Canby to reflect an even split on the distribution of the community service fee funds. And then you passed ordinance numbers 1535, 1533, 1534, 1536, and 1537 for second readings on September 2nd.
Amazing. Thank you, Melissa. I really appreciate that. And again, it's been two long evening back-to-backs for the city council and staff. And I really appreciate the work that everyone has done these last couple of nights and the last couple of months here, getting us to decision point in our city administrator. So thank you all. I really appreciate it. And again, Councilor Burge, we wish you all the best and thank you for your time on the council and your service, sir. We really appreciate it. And I know we will see you around for sure. With all that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Moved. Is there a second? Varwig seconds it. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned. Canby, good night. We'll see you in two weeks. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.